...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Davis?
Yeah.
Mr. Motes?
Here.
Mrs. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Rendner?
Here.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
At this time we'll do public presentations. Seeing then we'll move on down to the treasurer's discussion.
One of the things that we're required to do by one of the policies that you put in place this year is submit an annual investment report to the board and to our other state. So I have that on this board agenda. I've given you all a copy of it to review if you have any questions. It also has to list the compensation that we pay for an investment portfolio. So that is a report that looks like this on there. So if you have any questions about that, just let me know and it is an action item later on in the meeting. I have a then and now purchase order for the YMCA. It's for the event for the month of, or lease payment, I should say, for the month of June for $4,009.05 and then utilities. Two Edison was $1,021.94, Ohio Gas was $84.96 for a total of $5,115.95. Any questions on that? Power School fee payment system is up and running finally. So all parents will be able to log into a power school, their power school parent portfolio and pay their student fees. So that's new, but it interfaces in real time. So if you go online, you pay them, it shows up to the secretaries and it posts for them immediately instead of the secretaries having to go in and post those fees themselves.
Do the parents have to pay any additional processing fees in addition to?
Well, if they did it before today, no. But as of today, yes, there's a 3.62% credit card fee that goes with it, but that's actually lower than what they were paying on K-12, which was 3.8%. So there is a fee, but it's lower than the fee they currently were paying before.
We just wanted to integrate one system through Power School, which is where all of our courses are entered, all the fees are entered. So when a student has a schedule built, for example, let's pick maybe a 10th grader that has a biology fee or an art fee, whatever the case might be. So when that schedule is built, then it builds that. Now it integrates directly with that system and puts that on there instead of having a third-party vendor do it and pay a different fee. And then we were literally still, your office was still going through and then hand-entering that.
So actually what we would do is we would do a report from K-12, we would send out to the buildings, like the kids in their system that were, had fees paid online, they'd have to post that in Power School and then write up a receipt and send it back to us.
Absolutely.
So and there's no one, I mean, there's only two people entering it, so it'll hopefully cut down the like errors and stuff. We do have the ability to take credit cards now at the desks, at the secretary's desks. There's a little bit of a hiccup with that that I was not told until the webinar was on today, which is that if we take a credit card through a card reader, we have to hand-enter it into Power School for some reason. I don't know why it won't interface, but it doesn't. So I'm working with Mr. Morton to come up with a better solution to that instead of just putting those out and then having the secretaries have to enter those fees. So that will be coming hopefully.
We need that part to talk to the other part, just like it's supposed to.
Yeah. But currently that's a fault of the program. It's not something that program.
That's a programming issue. That'll be six months from now.
Yeah. I think we can, you know, if we can come up and establish a way to do it where it's like for people that absolutely have no other avenue to do it, don't want to use online, don't want to use a check, don't want to pay cash, then that might be an option. That's like a, you know, more of an anomaly than it is a practice, so.
There isn't anything on the notice for parents that says that there's going to be a fee?
I can go back and check. It may not just because they're already paying a fee, but we can send that out to them if you want.
I was going to practice on paying my daughter's fees that way and I was anticipating it, showing it when I got to the point where I was like quote checking out, so to speak. But I don't know for sure, Gary, I didn't look.
I think, just to avoid a couple of questions from individuals, we put it out there upfront rather than when they get to the end and they say they're paying a fee and they're like, why am I paying a fee?
Right.
Like I said, it's no change in practice.
Right.
They've always paid a fee.
Right.
And actually this one's lower, but we can definitely put that out there. You know, there's a fee associated with it, but the fee's lower than the previous fee. Especially, so they don't get confused with other systems that are charging that, so.
I mean, is it preferable to your office for people to pay that, pay with that system as opposed to sending in checks or bringing in?
Actually, it's more work for us if they pay online. But it's something where it's the convenience for the community and a lot of people don't pay cash and a lot of people don't have checkbooks anymore. So it's just more a convenience. But yeah, it's a little bit more work on our end, a little bit less work on the secretary's end because they're not taking checks and cash, so. And then the last thing I have is student activities. And I wanted to point out that I did amend the student boosters, student activity, and then I also added a live and kicking, which I sent out to you this afternoon in email, just because those came in later and I wanted to make sure they got on. I'm still missing like three, I think, which will come at a later date. So if you have any questions regarding any of those, let me know. But those are in the consent agenda as well as the then and now purchase order. So the only action item I have is the acceptance of the annual investment report.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual investment report. Thank you, Michael. You have a second?
Second.
Chris, any discussion on that? Seeing then, or your roll call?
Mr. Motes?
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin?
Yes.
Mr. Rendner?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
All right, moving on down to the superintendent's discussion items.
Again, just a couple of upcoming events. The 50th Annual Band Spectacular will take place September 18th at 7:30 here at the stadium. Two weeks from today, we'll have another Board of Education meeting here. And again, we noted last meeting, our support staff recognition dinner will be in the Defiance Elementary School auditorium at 6:00 PM. One of the things that I'd be remiss if I didn't say we had a lot going on this summer in terms of school facilities and maintaining and upgrading. And if you look, I put some generic information out about sealing and striping the elementary school parking lot, entrance drive, stadium parking lot. The north entrance, which is commonly referred to as the Y entrance, that is still our entrance. That had been repaired and patched a number of times over the past 15 years and it would recommend that that be completely milled out and replaced, which we did. Our bus garage hadn't had any significant maintenance or upgrades to it since the last that we could find was in 1999. So we went ahead and milled asphalt and our own maintenance and personnel remodeled the offices by painting them, cleaning them, extending the office, creating a little more space in there, putting some new windows in. They were single-pane windows that didn't open or close, so we're putting some new windows in those. And then the fencing around the property is in bad shape and we're in the process. That'll be done this fall yet. And the final project minus the capital grant project from the auditorium, the final project that we have entered into is that we removed all seats in the auditorium right after the dance show this summer. That the concrete floor that was painted blue was completely ground down and that has been replaced with an epoxy floor and the seats have been reinstalled with the center section. And if you're going to an event, you need a little more room, we created a little more room in the center section at the auditorium. In addition to that, when we seal the elementary parking lots, they go and reseal the elementary playgrounds and then those have to be repainted. And I think Mrs. Hell pointed out to you last meeting that Mrs. Wang, you know, spent a lot of time painting out on the parking lot. So just, you know, I don't want to say typical maintenance, but sanding, lightly sanding and refinishing all the floors, cleaning carpets, waxes, dead trees, mulch. I'd just like to, you know, give some kudos to John Mays and his staff because their list grows and grows and grows. There's always a project, there's always something, and they did a heck of a job in getting it around. In terms of our, you know, our asphalt parking lot, if you look at the stadium parking lot and if those of you that drive on it drive slow, because if not, it's a little bumpy. And at some point in time, we have a large project faced with us out there. We've patched it and sealed it every other year, but it'll get to the point where that is not something that would be a wise expenditure. So any questions on school facilities update?
Those also included are gym resurfacing and things like that took place over the summer.
Yes, sir.
Why was included in that?
I believe the same company did the YMCA. I'm sorry? No, no. I'm trying to see if it was on my list here, Gary, if it said anything specific about the Y. I know we put the company that does our floor in contact with the Y director for them to do it. And I think John Mays even offered to buy the material in bulk to get them a cheaper price. And I know that they have reached out to a foundation to see if it would cover the cost. Okay, any further questions? The bus garage's the last thing we'll do once all the projects are done down there. We actually, our roving maintenance, me and Keith Westrick, will actually paint the building as well. So it's been, it's been a number of years and it needs to be brought up. We ask our drivers to have pride in how they handle our equipment and how they drive and treat our people. And I think it goes to show that they can have pride in the facility as well. Update in enrollment, just some, some basic numbers. Twenty-three, 2,443 students in the district. That was of, as of 9/3. One of the numbers I wanted to point out to you is our open enrollment out at this point in time is 274 students open rolling out and we have 235 students open and rolling in. And we are trying to continue to close that gap. One of the things that Cheryl is happy about, and I'm sure every other treasurer in the state of Ohio is, is that when there is the funding, it follows the child. It will not be a pass-through through us. But if we can get that number to the positive at any point in time or a break-even point, I would consider that a win and we're working hard to have conversations with our families on why that's the case. Mr. Durden pointed out to you last meeting that we have 69 students at the Ford County Career Center. And, you know, I look at situations like a big class in our middle school, 196 eighth graders, 198 seventh graders. And then all of our elementary classes, Dust Point minus the fifth grade, which has 196, are between 150 and 175. So that's kind of been where we've fallen. We had been in the number of, you know, 190 to 205, but for the last few years, those numbers have been holding steady, right around that, so.
What, where are those numbers, 2,443 compared to last year?
I do, I do not have that data with me and I, actually, after I put that out, I thought I should probably get that. How about I follow up with that to you? I'll either email it to all of you or bring it next meeting, so. According to my treasurer, we just looked it up, she said it's down 18 students.
The official count is done when? Still October?
It's done on a rolling basis now. It's submitted to GMS.
Yeah, yeah. So that's why they actually do kind of an ADM, average daily membership, pretty regularly through, so it's important that we stay up on it regularly.
And then this new funding formula, they're going to be, every time we submit GMS, which I'm going to recommend we do at least on a weekly basis, to update that on a roll night because that's where our funding will be based on, so.
One of the things that I think it's good is that our principals understand the importance of really knowing where everyone is. And then Stephanie Garris, your EMIAS coordinator, is excellent at also maybe finding that odd situation and finding out where they are, what we need to do and so. Any further questions on enrollment?
Moving on down to the action items, if you have, none for?
I have no action items, Mr. Motes.
Move on down to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, then could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve.
Chris, you have a second?
I'll second.
Kathy. Anybody have any discussion on that?
Under the appointments, I notice we have retirement there for, appointment for retirement for Mrs. Thomas in the athletic director's office, as well as Sarah in the Coleman and C, who's been a higher, and Walter, who's been a higher, and the other slaughter, who's been hired. But I want to concentrate on Mrs. Thomas, I think. She spent 28 years in the district. I know not all of them have been in the athletic department, but a majority of them have been. She is present at almost every athletic contest that this school sponsors or puts on. And she, 99, 99% of the time, will always have a smile on her face and then 100th of a percent that she doesn't have a smile on her face is because you couldn't see her face.
Exactly.
But I know her children, I thought her children, and I just want to commend her for the hard work that she's done to help build that athletic program. And I know Mr. Beatty is probably not the most easy guy to work for at times and she's done a very good job, you know. We appreciate all the work she's done for the district.
When I walked into meeting, Mr. Beatty asked me to tell you, do not accept her resignation.
Okay, Gary, it's fine.
So you're right, Gary, that you'd be hard pressed to find somebody that doesn't have great things to say about Linda Thomas. Big loss for the school. Congratulations to her. Absolutely.
Any more discretion? Roll call.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Motes?
Yes.
Mr. Rendner?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Irwin?
Yeah.
Moving on down the line here, we'll go to old business. Anybody have any old business tonight for the school?
I actually got something that was business previously, so I will bring up old business. We had discussion probably a month and a half ago about a potentially putting together a break for, in the summer for our families, a clear, defined area. And then last Tuesday, I believe, the Athletic Council composed of head coaches, myself, Mr. Rendner came as a board guest. We went through and kind of outlined the expectation of where we were and I thought, Gary, it was clear, this isn't a mandate, this is just something that the board is hearing from a few families. And I think, Gary, for the most part, everybody was very receptive. What was difficult was trying to put everybody's calendars together and making something work. And since that meeting, they've had discussions amongst themselves. And Mr. Beatty, of course, is excellent at naming things and he has come up with the Bulldog Break. And the Bulldog Break is a 10-day period of time that will be shut down in the summer of 2022, beginning June 27 and ending July 6. What it does is, we will hopefully coordinate with our, with our gym maintenance refinishing company to coordinate to get in there during that time. But it does afford everybody a time off. Acme baseball was kind of the wild card per se in that, in that they would potentially be playing. And Mr. Beatty's going to work with Coach Hell then how they schedule to possibly afford some families maybe leaving the weekend before all of that starts and finish, coming back late in that week before the Acme tournament would start then, typically after the Fourth of July. But it's a 10-day period of time. We incorporated the Fourth of July in it and extended it a couple of days beyond that because some families with the fourth falling on a Monday would like to be out. And then annually, we'll revisit this and see what works the best based upon the calendar. So 6/27 through 7/6 of 2022 is the official Bulldog Break.
If I might add to some statements, first of all, I want to, being president, I want to thank the coaches who are present there right there, Mr. Morton and Mr. Durden, for taking the time to discuss this possibility. I think upon reflection, and I discussed this a little bit with Mr. Morton, that I find there's a willingness to provide the time for the athletes, the students and the parents, however, there's very few options available because the schedule's too conflicted and so many places. Like you got to take it with a band camp, some of basketball, some of baseball, volleyball. These all create issues and some kind of, you know, specific scheduling issue for coaches. And I know, having been a coach, you want the time with your kids, you know. I think there were a couple of different options of presenting the first week after the last day of school, the July 4th week, and then the last Sunday in July. There were reasons each sounded good and there were reasons each did not possibly work for the coaches. I think July 4th week, it's already expected some time off during the holiday, but it's also the beginning at, at Acme baseball, which is not school-affiliated per se, but it is a very important part to those students that play baseball, or those athletes that play baseball. Last week in July, as mentioned, is probably too close to the beginning of football and ball stadium. Some of the key words I gleaned from the meeting were, and I don't mean these in a negative way, I just want to use them to kind of explain some of the feelings. And the first one that popped out of me was soft. We're becoming soft with dealing with our student athletes. I don't agree, but again, as I said at the meeting, and I think Mr. Morton voiced, we're here to try to come to some kind of compromise, so. I don't think our student athletes are soft, maybe our parents are because they're soft. And I would be one of them. Commitment. Expect my players to commit. This will be a year-round commitment, not just during the season. Vacation. I haven't had a vacation in 28 years. July. To me, July is beginning of ball sports season. Control. I want to control what they are doing during the offseason. So if we're being utilized in order to try to create champions, it's somewhat effective, but at the same time, I think at times it became a little costly when you're trying to raise a family. And I know each sport considers themselves to be a family, but they're not a parent or the guardian of those individuals. I, you know, I started coaching this district in 1977, very first job in it. And, you know, we have, at that time, almost 85 football players. There have been seasons in the past, we've had 38. What's happened? Are the kids burning out or they just dropping out? They need a break. And as I said in the meeting, I'll be happy with anything. And if it conflicts a little bit with one sport, then a family, we're going to have to make a decision for our child, which I hope doesn't come back to haunt us. I'd hate to see my child sit there saying, I'm not going on vacation because I can't miss this practice. It should be me that has the control to tell my child, you're on vacation. It shouldn't be them holding that, I have practice over my head to keep the rest of the parent from going on vacation. So with that, I certainly appreciate the coaches taking the time and I appreciate them coming up with a specific time. I would like to be able to lock that time in annually, so parents can plan year to year.
I think that, that part will be fairly easy to do, just as calendars move a little bit, it may fluctuate by a day, you know, like for example, with the fourth falling on a, on a Monday, I believe, in the summer of '22. So it'll be a Tuesday and then do we start it a little earlier and finish it up a little earlier? And again, I told, that's why I told Coach Beatty, start looking at that calendar in the summer of '23 and '24 to see if we can stick to a specific time, then everyone knows that that's our time.
Right.
And I think that's the whole purpose of moving forward with this.
So we're within three days depending on, you know, so if we say the Sunday part to the Fourth of July?
Yeah.
Usually that will cover.
Typically will work out. That's correct.
We could establish that maybe as a potential date, the Sunday part to. Again, I think, I think Mr. Beatty pointed out at the beginning, they haven't had an athletic council meeting in quite some time, so that was one thing. And I think it's good to get the coaches together and let them talk things out. And I know there was an issue with maybe some coaches changing their schedules after they're out. And I think the council itself, them getting together and speaking these things is going to improve everything for our athletes and also the communication between the coaches as a whole and hopefully will continue to improve our quality of athletic life. And this, I also want to point out that bands involved, it wasn't just athletes, the band would be involved and other programs that would need some kind of institutional structure, don't you think?
Right. And that was one of the, you know, we had a perfect week picked out and it's band camp week and the reason why the band can't move is because that's the week that all the others stopped playing. But if we are going to close our facilities, then we don't want to close them to the band. And so it just, like, one little thing led to another. And, you know, and Gary brought up these points of what coaches say and it's not negative. I think it ought to put in perspective the pressure that these people feel as head coaches and the expectation of the product that they put on, on the field, the court, whatever the case might be. And they take that, you know, personally and it does have an impact on the student athlete. This is a great way for them to be able to step back, the coach step back, the kids step back, the family step back and take a breath and relax. So I'm happy that they were able to come up with something and bring it to us.
I think a number of priorities, the student themselves and health studies that I've seen, I'll, I'll draw, and I have some here with me tonight, and it's that giving the kids a break, some were requested two weeks after each sport for them to recover both mentally and physically. But again, I think it's a step in the right direction and I certainly appreciate that by heart, man, and Mr. Morton and Mr. Beatty for all the hard work they did in putting this together. Because I, it's difficult, you get 12 coaches together, you can barely get the right date figured out. So they did a very nice job and I very appreciate it.
Sauce, that old business?
If I may, I'll have to get a letter from Tris Sanford, the vice director, regarding the history of our community and our industries and whatnot. I wanted to make sure otherwise I wouldn't share it with you. Okay, that's.
I do have another thing, if you don't mind, Mr. Motes.
Nope.
It's going back to hometown technique. I just want to make sure I heard, I think I heard last time we had discussion on this. We were told that the WBL is going to absorb a dollar.
That's kind of a misconception. Every school in the WBL is absorbing a dollar, not the league itself. I clarified that after the fact.
Okay.
So every school absorbs the dollar fee in the league, not the league itself.
So if I were, so, for example, I bought two varsity tickets for the band working. $16 for two tickets, that's $8 a ticket. And a process fee of 79 cents for approximately $8.40 a ticket cost. There was an additional dollar that should have been?
No, no.
Where's the dollar coming from?
It's in the eight.
It's in the eight.
We only did seven.
Yeah, we get seven to us, positive to us per ticket.
So is that the WBL's ticket rate, $7 a ticket?
No, it's eight. But they're taking that dollar and absorbing that and really only making it a $7 net deposit per ticket versus $8 net deposit per ticket.
So basically the district's paying $1 for every ticket to cover the $1 fee that's charged for the ticketing system. And the only thing where the person's paying is the credit card user fee.
$7.9. I guess what, the way I'm looking at it, and I understand, but I suppose if the school does, has to pay the dollar, I guess I shouldn't even know that, but it still brings it down to $7, but I'm still paying eight. So.
We're not getting the revenue from that, is how it works all the way.
You're just not watching the revenue. So, but, but the school's not paying it, I pay it.
You have to pay regardless.
Right. So to say that the school's just dishing back the bug, they're dishing back the bug
So to say that the school is dishing back the buck, we're dishing back the buck that I gave you.
Sort of, I mean, it wouldn't be any different than if we took your eight dollars and paid four dollars to concessions.
Right.
Because then you're paying four dollars to concessions, but you're able to bill that we paid with your money that we collected for our game. So I mean, if you, if you reverse it, which actually I prefer, but it's not going to happen, that we collect the eight dollars and then we get billed the dollar fee. I mean, would that be different? I mean, because that's how everything happens when we get billed from the school district. We collect money for reasons.
I understand. I think what Gary's saying is, it's disingenuous of the, of the school district to say they're paying you for the dollar when it's actually the concealer's paying the dollar.
Correct. I see what you're saying. That, that makes sense. So we really ought to say, you're paying the dollar, we're just losing the revenue.
Well, basically, what we should say is, we're paying the dollar fee, you're paying the dollar per ticket.
Was the typical ticket seven dollars in the past?
Last year, they were seven dollars.
Yeah.
And it was a dollar seventy-nine to get a ticket last year.
For, for basketball.
So eight seventy-nine total.
Still the same policy.
The school earns the dollar, so to speak, but, but the WBL policy at that time was seven dollars per ticket at the gate. Now, that policy's necessarily changed, I think it still remains seven dollars a ticket.
I think they raised football to eight. I think.
Based upon information I saw, it said.
Okay.
Said seven, but that was two thousand and eighteen, if I'm right, so. So I guess, there are two, I guess, there's two things that are different, certainly. One, the individual just refuses to use, you know, technology in order to boost that, make sure they're able to come support our bulldogs. Two, these are our taxpayers, they've already paid for the facility, they're paying for everything that's taking place there. Three, by us giving up the dollar, if we charge eight dollars at the gate, let's say a thousand, a thousand tickets sold, that was eight thousand dollars. And then you add the forty cent fee, you got eight four hundred dollars. Okay? Then you get a thousand dollars back to hometown ticket, so now you're seventy-four. Then you got to give them the four, because that was the additional fee, so now you're seven. How much do you pay our people to collect a ticket at the gate? At an hourly rate or?
No, it's a, it's a fat, fat fee per game. And it varies depending on what job you're doing at the gate.
I suppose, and my purpose would be, I'd rather give the money to Wes, who I know, who works in this district, who pays taxes in this district. And give it to a company which is making, as they should, they're trying to do as they can to make money, but they're making big money, especially since the OHSAA has selected them as the ticketing agent for OHSA's sports. We're creating, we just have built, our taxpayer just have built this company because we don't want to exchange cash, but we'll take it to the concession stand.
Do we not still take cash at the gate?
We do, we don't advertise it. If somebody showed up and said, hey, I don't have access to the internet or whatever, we'll take their cash. We do have the casual fan, I call it, that would not necessarily be aware of that.
So, and to me, that's misleading. We tell the public, we'll take cash at, at the gate. And I think that's what we need to do. Our public needs to know that we will accept cash at the gate.
But not all WBL schools will accept cash at the gate.
No, not all WBL schools do. We have on our website that you must purchase tickets online for away games. But not all WBL schools don't accept cash at the gate either. Kentmore will accept cash at the gate. Ottawa-Landor, I believe, will accept cash at the gate. Two dollars, purchase tickets at the gate, Ottawa-Landor. There will be no pre-sale tickets though. So there are other WBL schools, they're not consistent. We tried to gain some consistency in the WBL, yet there are schools that are bucking the system somewhere.
There are others that will, they're saying, we want you to buy online. And if you don't want to buy online, it's two dollars more at the gate, and they're charging ten ahead. No student, no anything like that at the gate. And we, we wanted to avoid that.
Well, we avoid it by just saying we're going to charge eight dollars. I, and I understand the process. If it's a COVID situation, we don't want to hand the money, then.
I, I got it.
And we don't sell concessions, we don't sell fifty-fifties, we don't sell anything else because that's transfer of funds, our money. But if it's not due to COVID, we need to open it back up.
And in support of that, if I may, we have a population of elderly people that do not have access to computers or not are able to use it or aren't literate enough. I actually had a man show me his phone, and he has absolutely no, he built these whatsoever. So for them, this online thing has become a nightmare. And yet they want to be a part of our school family and our school spirit and support our kids by attending events. So it's put an obstacle up for that population.
Is, just piggybacking on that, is anybody, or anything, those golden bucket cards, able to give in?
Yeah, they don't need to do any of the.
Just hand that card?
Yeah, if they reside in our school district and they, they come and, and they pick that up, it doesn't require them to have a hometown ticket.
I guess you can't have a reserve ticket like that.
Correct. That would be, that would be what Kathy is speaking of, that would be a general mission.
And I, I want to make it clear, this is not, you know, it's not a Mr. Morton issue, it's not a Mr. Beatty issue. It's, this is what was done in order to try to get kids back to playing the game of football and being able to have people attend this. Now, I think, I mean, I just watched a hundred thousand fans at Clemson, you know, sitting out there with no masks on or anything like that. I know universities do all online.
And they don't do any tickets, but online.
They do all online.
And they don't even take money from the stadiums anymore.
So the hundred thousand people that are together, you let a couple of people go through the gate and pay, pay at the gate if they want to watch our team play. I think that's, I'd like to see us maybe.
What I would like to, if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, I think, I would like to then put out to our public, we will take cash at our events. We prefer that you do this. And when I say we prefer that you do this, the athletic department certainly prefers that we do this. And it makes it easier for them in promoting and then knowing exactly who. And one of the, the big things that occurs, and I'll give an example of, let's say, people bought their ticket for the football game Friday night, and they bought them starting Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And for whatever reason, that game gets canceled Friday night. With one push of the button, every single person has refunded their, their money with a cancellation to on-team ticketing.
We just don't offer pre-sale tickets, uh, gate tickets.
Correct. And so it's, it's going to be, you know, it's something like that. So I'll draft up a little, and I, again, I, Mr. Beatty will not care. And I think a lot of our fans have gotten, they'd like to get in the habit of doing it. And it's something they've been doing since last November. And, and, and OHSA will continue to do it in their tournaments and so. But I think that we will communicate to our public that if you're unable to do this or don't want to do this, we're going to take your cash at the gate and we welcome it.
Now, as far, as far as hometown ticketing is concerned itself, they, they advertise on their site when they're trying to engage potential customers, that they do not charge the schools anything. The schools are not charged a dime. So at least usually the taxpayers don't pay for it through the purchase of tickets. The scanning equipment that we receive from hometown ticketing, that's paid for by them, correct? Scanned tickets?
No. Those are, that, actually, some of it's personal use, cell phones, like, like they take a picture of it with that.
But they get the software, whatever.
Yeah, there's a download on the app, yeah. It's free, correct, correct.
Okay. I would ask that, you know, if there's anybody in our community that has that type of capability that the mind put some of, something like that together, that they make a proposal to the school for the future use. I'd rather see it stay in our community or someone that, I know we have people in our community that could create something very similar. And they would continue to contribute to the school, not only in their taxes, but I'm sure they'd be more and more going to donate some of that money if they're making that, because they're going to make good money on, on.
I anticipate with this taking place around the state, there's going to be other companies that are going to come in, that are going to develop software, they're going to come in and say, we'll do it for fifty cents. We'll do it for a quarter. And because volume is key. And, and again, you know, it's one of those that, again, our fans, you've seen our events, our fans are pretty accustomed to it. But we, we have had some people in, Mr. Beatty runs an athletic department, he prides himself on it. And I can promise you, if you show up with money for a hometown ticketing, you're going to get into the event. He's not going to turn anyone away.
Thank you.
Any other old business? You want down to new business? Does anybody have any new business for the board tonight? Seen none, I do see you having a meeting for executive session for number two?
Correct.
Through the purchase of property, for the public's purpose of sale?
I'll make a motion during the executive session.
I'll second.
For number two.
I'm not sorry, roll call?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Everlin?
Yes.
Mr. Ridenberger?
Yes.
Mr. Motes?